Well, I was in there.
He danced.
A little body.
Yeah.
We got him to watch it up there.
My chance.
No.
Little jar.
Should be safe. Little jar.
What was it?
With distant boxes.
Oh, yeah.
We found one thing in there. Victoria. And. And. Couple of two hundred fifty dollars. It's just, you know, a hundred, maybe fifty years old. It was another five bucks from now on.
Going to meet you.
She had a house. It was twenty six. But we.
Okay, buddy.
Well, see this stuff.
Okay, man. You want okay?
Yeah.
No, I've been said. But you go ahead. I'm sorry.
I'm gonna fight it too.
I don't see me.
Hey, John.
I'll say, who are you?
Call me over seven o'clock, sign your pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag, the United States of America. And to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we're gonna do guest speaker first, we have a couple of guest speakers here. We'll go with this person first.
Thank you. Hey, I just wanted to stop out, give you some cattleers, cans, a little pen. Wish you a good holiday season, eh? Appreciate the business. You guys have any questions for me or anything, or anything you'd like to do? Let you get to work.
Thank you. Can we back up for a second here? We're gonna do a roll call. Dan Van Guren.
Yeah.
Jeff Borbene.
Here.
Ben Huff, here. We're involved, not. A couple of other guest speakers, we'll move ahead real quick to fire departments. We have to find fire contracts tonight. I think we have a. Right over here. Hope well. We have two of the fire departments here tonight. Do you guys have any questions concerned, anything like that?
Dan, you got anything, buddy?
No. Any questions?
Nah. I'll just give you a little, you know, I try to give you guys some updates of, you know, what kind of runs you've had. To year to date, as of tonight, you've had eighty-seven runs in our coverage area of Bowling Green. One of the biggest things we've accomplished this year, and I hope the residents pass it along. We did start and put one person on, expanded our part-time paid hours from four o'clock in the evening till ten o'clock at night. Until our night shift comes on with two people. For anybody that doesn't know, we have two guys Monday through Friday at Station One from eight to four. And then we have two guys at our Franklin Township Station that run all over on Saturday and Sunday from eight to four. A few years ago, when we took over part of the Bowling Greens contract, that money enabled us to go ahead and put a night shift on. And that, we have two people on duty from ten o'clock at night till six o'clock in the morning, Sunday night to Thursday night. And the reason that is because on Friday, Saturday, we have more volunteers around during their, not having to get up and go to work. And then this year, because our run numbers dictated and showed that we weren't getting the trucks out the door fast enough. Because I think everybody appreciates the way the economy is. We have less and less volunteers that are able to hang out at the station or be available. We got them working two or three jobs, their wives are working, or the wives and the husbands working, depending on what sex is on the department. But we come up with the money, and not optimal. I don't really like to have only one person at the station. But it lets the truck get out the door pretty much immediately. Can get to your house and establish some care. Why one or two or some of the volunteers catch up with the squad? And what we do is we go to the scene. So with that, I thought it was a good investment in our money. We have done that shift, that one person has ran ninety-five times since the first of July. So you can see how many times when we may be delayed getting to your house because the volunteers had to run to the station. Or straight up honest with you, we didn't get through. You know, that was our volunteer hour. So we try to spend the money as efficiently as we can. So that's just kind of a little thing of what we've done this year. If you guys have any questions, you can ask me, or feel free to call me at the firehouse, contact Ben. He can get your number if you can't find it in the book. Thank you.
Dan, thank you. Hey, sir, I'd like to, you know, thank you guys for everything you're doing there. I'm gonna need to take you down to the front here. In the last two months, I've had to call you guys up for my son. Does medical issues, I'd like to personally thank you for a good job for being out there and doing the job there.
Okay, well, I appreciate it. I think, I think, Dirk, if I'm wrong, you're probably in their territory coverage area, so you may want to thank these gentlemen.
We really appreciate it there, and.
Thanks, Mike.
Yep.
We have two copies of each contract here tonight. We'll go ahead and sign the copies, and then if you guys would just get a couple, one copy back to us.
Yes, sir.
I know you're not gonna get to uniform.
Yes, I've taken my trustees.
We'll sign all the copies here tonight, and that way you guys just get it back to us.
My next meeting's the second, so I'll get it signed on the second, and then get it back to you.
The contract's gonna read the same as it has in the past. I do believe we'll have a little more money to come in this year if people pay the taxes. I don't know how much Jenny didn't use state money to say how much extra. But we give out everything, so. Up to date, she said, I think there were seventy-seven cents left in the account, so we give out everything, so. So we split three ways, but, I mean, definitely if you guys have any questions, problems, you guys, you guys can call me. Do these real quick.
We also had eighty-seven runs.
Okay.
Did you?
Both of them, Dave? How many do you have?
I had eighty-seven just in our coverage area. We're, we're at eight hundred and seventy-eight runs right now with our contract in Franklin, your contract, and then Licking County. Didn't have some money. But I, you know, speaking of perhaps Ted and Fisher, I think all the fire departments work good together. We, you know, we don't have any kind of ego problems, everybody.
No, me.
Everybody's holding hard on this fire down here.
I don't know.
We'll do a little call on the motion made, motion made to go ahead and sign the fire contract tonight. Motion was made by Dan, seconded by Dan. Dan?
Yeah.
Jeff?
Yes.
Six, huh? Does anybody have any questions for anybody? Any questions, Bob? Do you need? Just get one back.
Fire.
Paper. Awesome.
Did it come? Thank you.
Nice, Mike.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
It turned on again. And it's, it's considered a construction trailer which you're living in during the construction of your home, which the board needs to approve. They approved it for Mr. The Vermillion. Right part. And his home had the same incident. So you might want to ask the board if they would vote to allow you to keep that one year during the construction of your home. And there is no permit fee for that construction building. Construction trailer. Okay, so you might want to come back and ask them now.
You know, I'm gonna make a motion that we allow, Sean, what's your last name?
Ronnie Markus, four, gather.
I forget your last name.
Hom.
Don't worry.
H O M. S H D R.
I'll make a motion that we give Sean up to a year to live in the temporary trailer there while the home is under reconstruction.
I'll second.
Sean, I will get with you, okay?
That's fine. I can give you my number, case I'm gonna get a hold of him. Seven four oh. Four three. Seven seven eight eight.
Yep. We do a roll call vote. Motion was made by Ben to lash on to your stand temporary trailer while the house is under reconstruction for up to a year. Seconded by Dan. We do a roll call vote. Dan?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
All right, thank you, Sean.
Thank you.
Any other guest speakers?
Yeah.
See, guys. Four swambers. Jenny had one thing here, it was from Phyllis. It's any changes of address to go into the little township books that we give every year. If anybody wants to change their address, phone number, anything like that, and they'll let her know, leave us here. Sorry, if anybody wants to change anything, please note it on there, so we can, we can change it. That's all she had. The report, safety. Think everything's pretty good on safety, huh? Cup's up and running?
Yeah.
Maybe after or something.
Ready to go.
Very good. Fire company, we already did contracts. Zoning.
Update on the property on Laurel Hill, which the owners are the Wes's. Planning Commission contacted me. The lot split has been approved. Now they have to complete it by contacting their attorney and having the deed written up for those two lots. Also, our aerial photos, we're having difficulty getting in the air due to the weather. So we'd like, I would like to know if I can extend it possibly through December. Hopefully not, but my timeframe, I request an extension through December.
Do we put timeframe on?
November, you said you wanted it done by November.
By the end of November.
Yeah, but we don't know if that's gonna happen with the weather.
I'll make a motion that we extend the timeframe for the aerial photos to go another thirty days until the end of December. Do a roll call. Dan?
Yeah.
Jeff?
No.
Ben, yes. All right, on that last split, so everything has been approved for you guys.
You need to call, you need, one of you need to call yourself, because that was inaccurate. You need to call. You need to call the planning, or the engineer, or the reporter. You need to call them.
So it has not been filed?
You just need to call them, because she has bad information. You need to call them.
Ben, I sent you copies of it. I don't know if you received them, but.
Call yourself.
Planning Commission sent me the copies of it.
Has it done?
I'm not gonna say no. You call them.
Well, I'm not playing games, we went on with it so long.
Just call them. Her information is not correct. She's saying it's not done, this isn't done, this isn't done. I said it was completed, other than the drawing up. Okay, well, none of that's correct.
Is it complete? Is the lot split complete?
I'd say ninety-nine and a half percent.
Has it been recorded? Yes, no?
As soon as I get it through the mail.
Okay, but yes, it has been recorded then.
Yeah, but I don't know where she got. It's recorded through, so I can go get a copy of that deed, is what she's saying. According to the planning commission, this is what I got, and I'll give you a copy of it.
Appreciate it. We appreciate it.
So she's gotta go get a copy of our deeds?
No, she just said she wanted to get a copy, and she didn't say she.
Why does she need to?
Anybody could be.
She need to get everybody else's.
It's all a record. But thank you, if that's finished, thank you.
I've done everything, just under a thousand dollars, you could have to do, okay?
Well, I'm sure Barb will do a follow-up to make sure.
Thanks to all of them.
Is that correct, Barb?
Visibodies.
Barb?
Yes.
Are you gonna do a follow-up to make sure everything's completed?
As soon as the planning commission tells me the deed has been filed. They have one year to file it.
When is the year up?
Talk to your planning commission. Boom.
You're supposed to know.
I gave you the answer. I don't think it's today.
All right. Is that it under zoning?
That is it under zoning.
Park committee. Had a couple of things handed to me, the park committee here. The rental list, and some money that was turned in for the rentals in November. There was five rentals in November. Two of them were free. One of them was a hundred twenty-five dollar, and two of them were twenty-five dollars. That's up to date, and then from now on, from today until December twenty-eighth, they have booked. Eleven rentals. Be pretty busy in the next thirty days. States on here, a few things they need. And then also, says no park committee meeting on the nineteenth of November because not enough members to have a meeting. Next meeting will be January twenty-first, two thousand fourteen. Okay? Some question right now, okay?
The park was, we oughta go ahead and get a water softener, put in there.
We, we, it's over here, though, we allocated the money.
Yeah. Do we need to make a motion to just get it done, or?
We already, I know we already allocated the money.
I know we did.
Just to put one in over there, so. You just want like Sears or something like that, so you want to get one like that?
I don't know, we're gonna make, whatever will do the job.
I know myself was here for the park committee, Dan was here, there was nothing posted on the door, I know that, so I wanted to be aware of that, but they canceled the meeting. I was unaware, we sat in a room for forty-five minutes, probably, wait until they show up, nobody showed up, I never got a phone call, so. I was pretty disappointed about that, but there was no. Irritation or anything like that, and they canceled.
It's twice.
Probably more than that. All right. Twenty-first, seven o'clock. January twenty-first, two thousand fourteen.
Are we allowed to talk about park committee?
Uh, yes, I'm, dance park committee, sure.
Well, I'm gonna tell you what the park committee is doing.
What today was that?
Twenty-first. We're listening.
Well, I'm gonna tell you why. Every time you guys have a park committee, nobody shows up, they cancel the meetings, they don't do anything. Why do you have a park committee in the first place? They don't do nothing. Nobody takes care of this building over here. They're supposed to clean it every time they use it, they don't do that. It's just aggravating for the township to come in, people coming in, have to clean up before we use the place. And it's a joke. They don't, the park committee, the people don't, the park committee don't do anything for the park. So I, why don't you deal away with it? You didn't have it years ago, why you got it now? They don't do anything. I mean, somebody's gotta do something. Because this is getting ridiculous. Like I say, they don't have enough people coming to the park committee to have a meeting, so why even have them in the first place?
I attended an event at the Park Community Building, and one of the problems I found was we couldn't use the restroom. That's an issue. And nobody notified anyone there was a problem. And if there was a problem with the restroom, they should have notified the people having the event. And there was quite a few people at the event.
I spent half my time working on the clothes, getting it to work, and Jack and I did.
During the event?
During the event.
This is wrong.
Just as having, must have, having worked, I know, a water softener is gonna help that. It's gonna take time, but just like the, they're a part of, they're shot, the claws don't have water softener. And plus. It's ridiculous.
Communication.
Park committee's supposed to take care of this stuff, and they're not doing it, because that community building's supposed to be under their control, isn't it? Well, nobody does anything. And you need to address it. It's getting a little out of hand.
We'll look into, you know, we'll, Dan set up some guidelines, I don't have a deal with me tonight, and what your duties were gonna be, and things like that, so. Let me look into that. I haven't seen any of the park committee members. I haven't seen the committee.
I know there's nobody's here, but. Everybody knows they don't show up. They sit over across the street there and don't do nothing. Our park committee president won't even come over to our meetings to hear this habit thing, do it.
And Ben, might I add, obviously, the park committee president does not keep a very good calendar. Because of all the controversy we had with the situation underneath the calendar.
You gotta take care of it.
No, no. All we need to take care of.
Well, I put in a records request for the copy of the calendar before October. I still have not gotten, I sent it certified.
Quiet down.
But I sent it certified, she signed for it. First apartment of that apartment, I still have not gotten nothing.
But no response back on that?
Nothing at all.
I, I'm gonna add that, when that's questioning good people's standing and integrity, I think that should be brought a meeting up to the table. I don't think that's something that should linger. That, because that's, that, that's, that's wrong.
And I did make a total copy of everything that was put on the volunteers' Facebook page about saying the park, didn't even get a new copy when you were having that in there until she saw it on the calendar. And then you, yourself, or one of our members called you, and you were the one that talked to Barker and reserved that going. We had already dates for that. When I went over and talked to Barker, she showed me the calendar, there was no name on that calendar. Then suddenly a name appears on it, and it appears on Facebook. And I have talked to an attorney about the whole situation. That's why I sent things certified mail to prove that I had sent and requested. And I'm not letting this go. You know, our name, as a group, is put out there that we bumped somebody when we did not. And those records were falsified. She wants to go to court and testify, she didn't falsify it, that's fine, we'll push it.
I'd suggest somebody else to take the calendar, her was just.
There needs to be more than just one person to count.
Yeah.
I think we should talk to Barb about first. I like it on park committee together, though.
Do you want to reply first?
They're supposed to be there November nineteenth, so.
They were supposed to be there the month before that.
What records is it that you're wanting, because Jenny, she turns everything over to Jenny, doesn't she?
You requested a copy of the calendar.
Yes, I requested a copy of the calendar.
It should be there there.
No, she just scanned it off.
Does that thing work in everything now?
Yeah.
All we have here is get the calendar, the pocket, and everything.
Yeah.
What do you think? I know there's been some controversy about it.
Well, look how long it took them to finish, well, they didn't even finish the Memorial Breck Day, that's been going on for years. And I have copies of the blog that they had finished, or that they'd written in, that Vicki Curtis sent it. Two years ago, they were going to finish that project. Then it was gonna be done last spring, then it was gonna be done last fall. So another year, it's taken three years. Why?
I mean, how did Brooklyn bother you, neat? Now, that should have been done right when the flight pulled, put in. And, uh, why it going? Working on it, concrete, it should be done well.
Well, it's actually too bad, I, if any of you have driven out Laurel Hill Road, but for Veterans Day on the Facebook page, I posted a picture of a flag that's on my road that is absolutely disgusting because it's Rip to Shrek's.
That's my flag, I'm proud of it. I flock for it.
Yeah, Rip to Shrek's does not honor a flag. That is against the.
Just climb up there and replace it.
Sure you're right.
Yeah.
Give back that part, when they had a table where they even rented a forty-block, because they knew that bathroom. They'd use it for a forty-block, I know.
It's much longer to take care of the workplace, it worked better.
Yep.
I replaced all those parts when they had less than a year ago, it was last winter sometime. So this water softener might be a big problem. I replaced all those parts when they had less than a year ago, it was last winter sometime, so this water softener might be a big problem.
When did you look at it again?
That, all the assemblies all picked up again, so that's what the problem is, because all those parts are fairly new.
Yeah, well, I think you do once you put it back in.
We'll do a softener and stuff like that, I mean, what do you guys think about, do you want a special meeting with the park committee, request that they come?
Yeah.
We have a special one, probably, we have to give to Jenny, I don't know if it's advertising or not.
Yeah, we can advertise it.
Can't, can't wait till the twenty-first, then, we have extra expenses.
It's two months away.
Yeah, we should, just give one.
Got red eleven lines in the assembly, we can get that.
Yeah.
So you plan on getting this water softener relatively soon, then?
We already discussed that.
Well, if it's eleven times booked.
You remember, I did, if I gave you one, you didn't want it. Brand new.
It's up to you, I'm just, you know, it's booked eleven times, and we've got issues as usual, but we can't get it.
We'll, uh, we'll make a motion that Jeff go ahead and take care of the installation of new water softener over the community building.
They got the same rea- same thing he's gonna do about when they put care of the lock copper?
And you, uh, I don't think I was on the board when you did this motion. For this water softener, so what, what's the budget? What has guys, what's there, decided? Assuming that was two thousand ten eleven, and I don't recall it happening.
I don't know, but I'll make another motion to purchase a water softener, get it in.
So you already did that, and I'm just asking, uh. Just asking some details of what you decided we're gonna do, how much money is allowed at that time, if it's just open to do.
Let's put, let's put them out.
What, I don't know what to do.
I think if I wanted a Sears for, for less than a thousand, I'd have that, I don't know.
Yeah, we, we got one at Sears for around six, a decent, so that was a few years ago.
Well, if it takes a thousand dollars to put one in, they got it covered?
Now, what?
Do I?
I, I'd say less than that, I don't think.
Well, I mean, not to go for a thousand, I don't know.
That's set up over there, so all you gotta do is just purify the water for that bill, you don't have to do it over here, so you don't need the money. Test the water.
Yeah, about time you worked, though.
Yeah. That's the way they sell them, they'll ask you, you take the water in the Sears.
Take one out of here.
I don't know.
I made a motion to appoint Jeff in charge of installing the new water softener in the community building. And I'll put a limit on her to not exceed.
Thousand dollars.
Do you want quotes on this, or you just want me to handle it?
Just get it done.
Put a time in the law?
Next week.
Motion was made by Ben to appoint Jeff in charge of installing the new water softener in the community building not to exceed a thousand dollars, seconded by Dan. Roll call, Dan?
Yeah.
Jeff?
Yes.
Ben? Yes.
I'm also gonna buy new parts for that toilet, but we don't wanna put them in, so I have to get some.
You're gonna have to fix it.
Oh.
That before you fix the water, but it ain't working.
It ain't working.
You gotta try it then, you still have to spend money, it don't cost that much.
No, no, things ain't that expensive.
You say it's not working, it's not functioning at all?
No, uh-uh, it's not working right.
Needs new ones in now, that's why.
Just purchased it Sears, our account is Lowe's, so I'm sure they sell.
You can Lowe's sell water? Okay, if they sell water softener, Lowe's will be fine, too.
Not concerned about Lowe's, just fill with that.
Obviously, that would allow it, yeah.
Shouldn't you spend the week just going around trying to get quotes?
You buy a Connecticut or something, they're like three thousand, so we're not gonna go that route, I don't know. Back to park committee, do we want to set a meeting to meet with them?
Yeah, I'd say let's set a meeting, uh. Let's do what?
Let's do one, we're gonna have to set a yearly retention attention meeting, let's do one on, uh, December tenth, it's a Tuesday.
Okay.
Eight AM?
Yeah, that'd be fine, eight AM in the evening.
Yep. Eight, yeah, eight AM. Good morning. Eight in the morning.
Uh, in the morning?
So we can do, we'll do, build purpose meeting. We have to do a records meeting. So we do a records meeting at eight, and then we can do the park committee meeting at nine, you want?
In the morning?
Yeah.
Well, what I'm thinking is, some of the, for the park committee, probably be better in the evening. I'll, I'll wake you up, Dan.
In case they're working.
Oh, no, it, it's not for me, just, maybe they're working or whatever, is the reason why, might be better if it's in the evening. I mean, I don't know, you know what I mean?
Right. Do you guys want to attend that meeting? I'm asking you guys, anybody here want to attend that meeting?
I would like to attend.
I can't in the morning.
Is that a morning or evening meeting?
Evening.
Evening would be better, I would think. Just make it eight o'clock at the evening.
We did eight in the evening?
What if we did it next month in meeting, and just did it before this meeting, set it like, uh, six o'clock or something, just do it on the same night as the month.
We could do that.
Be more apt to be able to get people to pick, to be able to come.
That'd work.
Guys, I like that.
When's your monthly meeting?
Last, last Tuesday, I'm on, the twenty-fourth is the same.
No, I get it, thirty-first.
Oh, wait, I'm on the wrong.
Thirty-first, New Year's Eve?
You don't want a New Year's Eve?
Do you want to reschedule it, bumping it in a week?
We'll talk about that, how that goes. So, is it, is it on the twenty-fourth? We'll, we'll come back to that, so let's, would you want to make a motion to do it, the, an hour before the regular meeting next month?
Is it gonna be on the twenty-fourth?
No. No, we'd rather do it, I think I'd rather do a meeting on the thirty-first instead of Christmas Eve.
Yeah, no doubt.
Yeah.
No, that, whatever.
Alright, well, I'll make a motion that, um, we're gonna have a special meeting with, um, the members of the park committee. On December thirty-first, it's the same night as our regular business meeting.
We got February.
February is the same.
Yeah, we'll, yeah, we'll hold the park committee meeting at six.
You know, there's no Bible, there's no Eve.
Oh, New Year's Eve doesn't start until five minutes before midnight, come on.
This one.
Come to the meeting, then we go party.
Yeah, that'd be a near.
That's not a good day.
I'll be here.
I'll be here till tomorrow.
Don't you want to do a meeting, you want to do that?
I, I'd just keep on Thursday. I'm in motion to have a special park committee meeting on December thirty-first at six PM. And we'll have Jenny notify all other members on the park committee to be here.
That'll work.
You want to second it?
I'll second it.
Do a roll call, Dan?
Yeah.
Jeff?
Sure, yes.
Ben? Yes. Everybody marking calendar, please attend.
So, do you have any action on the regular meeting that, so your work, what was?
Anything else on the park committee, anybody else have anything, call, related, community building related, nothing like that? Unfinished business, uh, trash is on here, I don't have any updates, last time I talked to Amy, she had sent a letter, came back to her as a non-address, she was working on finding an address, a correct address to send a certified letter. That's the last update that I have, you know? Any other unfinished business, anything? Jeff, do you have anything?
No.
New business? We stated that we're gonna keep the meeting the same in December thirty-first, seven o'clock, for the regular business meeting. We need to hold a yearly record retention meeting, I'm gonna make a motion that we have a, our yearly record retention meeting on December tenth at eight AM.
That means for you and Jenny, basically, we just find out if she can come.
Yeah, I want to make sure the board's okay with that, in case anybody else would like to attend.
Have you already talked to her, you know?
Yes, she said that'd be fine.
Alright, did you move the motion through?
I did.
Second it?
Do you second it? Alright, we will call dirt on having the record retention meeting, December tenth at eight AM. Dan?
Yeah.
Jeff?
Yes.
Ben? Yes. Any other, there's any?
No.
I think we got it in here.
Now I guess back to unfinished business, did you have a copy of that stuff that, that's from the last meeting?
Already gave it to you.
I'm gonna get, you want a copy here?
Did you all get that thing working, too? The other night, I, uh, last, there was a email that I was gonna get a copy of, did you all get it working at the, after the meeting, because I came back down and it been dead.
Did you leave that copy of that stuff when you came back down?
Yeah.
Because it wasn't here.
At this point, you're gonna need to contact, uh, is her name Margie, at the co-op, if you want, because I don't have any more copies.
I'll contact Amy, she'll contact you.
Margie, yes, Margie at the co-op.
So you don't have a copy of it, is what you're saying?
I've left it for you twice now.
You have not left, okay.
I don't have any more copies.
Have you seen anything in here, Dan? Have you guys seen anything?
At the, at the meeting that I didn't attend, I came down, I made sure that each and every one of you had copies, and you guys actually signed the check to reimburse me for the copies.
I requested a copy from the last meeting for the, actually, one for this meeting, it was sufficient amount of time, which would be seven to ten business days. So, you don't have a copy for me?
That's more to say than that, Ben.
Okay, well, I just want to make sure everybody's aware of that, I'll be contacting Amy about that, that I would like to have a copy of that from Jeff and.
So is, is the machine working, because I still, the.
What machine do you speak of? The printer?
The printer, yeah, after the meeting, I was supposed to get a copy of, an email that was illegal corresponds to the zoning suspension.
I've not worked for it, I, I do not know.
Yeah, it was a class meeting, she had it, and I had it in my hand at one point.
I do not know that. But if you don't have a copy for me, you're not gonna get a copy for me, then we'll find another avenue, so.
You probably charge us what we're owing.
Alright, if there's anything else on new business, we'll move on to public comment.
He can go first.
Unfinished business. You kind of skipped, or, no, I mean, excuse me, new business.
I never did new business, if you ever did new business.
Our friends would like to request the use of the community building for, uh, that last Monday, for two thousand fourteen.
Our friends of Bowling Green Township?
Yes. And we would like to start maybe doing fundraisers, so that we can, um, purchase the signs that we had discussed for the Interstable and Green Township.
You want to request the building just for the, the Monday before the meeting, just next month?
Well, and then, depending on if we have a fundraising dinner or something like that, if we have a scope location. Which we are kind of discussing, and we will bring that to you next month, so we're getting in. Yeah, yeah.
Do you want to do, it's not just next month?
No, no, for two, for two thousand fourteen.
Right, you want to do, every, two thousand fourteen, every month?
Yes.
I don't have a problem with it.
I don't either.
Um, do you have any questions, Jeff, problems with anything like that?
It's the same night you had these last three months, same.
If you guys do like a, like a fundraiser, would you know like a month in advance?
Oh, yeah, we would know a couple months in advance.
So you could bring to the meeting like you.
Yeah.
Because there'll be advertisement, newspapers, everything letting them know, so it can have already turned out possible.
And, and we do want to give the funds to Jenny, in the sp- you know, so she can set up an account, um, where the money would specifically go for our project.
If you guys, if there's anything.
Make a motion for.
Do you have a problem with it?
No, I don't have a problem.
Well, I'll make, do you go make a motion?
I'll make a motion, we, you don't want that Monday.
Of every?
Every month.
Month?
Yeah.
For the year of two thousand fourteen.
The third Monday?
The Monday before the town meeting.
Last Monday.
Last Monday.
Actually, the Monday before the trustee meeting.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Town meeting, is that it?
Last Monday before the town meeting.
Think we got it also for December, Ben, if it's not running on that Monday, don't you usually, Monday's are never run?
Right, two minute motion, Dan? I don't want boys.
What's that, what's that date, because there are a bunch in December.
There'd be, it'd be the thirtieth, if we have our meeting the thirty-first.
To allow friends of Bowling Green Township to use the building on Mondays before the meeting for two thousand fourteen.
Is that booked? Okay.
Had a time on that, on the motion.
You guys always have a meeting yet?
Six thirty.
Six thirty? Alright, well, I'll second the motion. Do a roll call, Dan?
Yeah.
Jeff?
Yes.
Ben? Yes. And if you guys are gonna do like a fundraising event, I'm just coming back to township's last Monday, you know, the meeting before. Any other new business?
What about these Christmas bazaars and stuff they have over here, with the mess they got, there, there could be some money for that, there's, it sounds like many money for the heat, electric and stuff, or what?
The rental is free, I know that, so what's said that on here? I, honestly, I didn't take part in, in booking that, I don't know if there was any kind of fees for vendors to set up or anything like that.
It shouldn't be, as a profit, as, they're making a profit.
No, I, I can vouch for one, absolutely no profit whatsoever. It was to build a church, now, I can tell you that it was to build a church.
Shame on you.
They didn't get no money.
You talking about over here?
Over there at that building, the Christmas bazaar. All that money that the people that I knew was to build a church. Everything, everything was donated, it was on the tables, and it was to build the church at Hopeville.
Well, there's some people bring everything up here to this, why don't we do it down there?
I live in this township, I built a church there.
I don't know if we really have to say in the, in the.
God don't have no township, okay, God don't have a township.
Alright, cool.
We have people that come.
But I don't know that answer to that, Jack, I don't know if they could get any, I don't know.
What's a year?
They pay the township, but they pay the church over here in the summertime, fifteen, twenty dollars.
I, I don't know, we can, we can ask the park committee, um, when we have that meeting.
When they have their meeting, but over here, they turn electric cash on, and I don't think they pay enough.
Once a year is the only time I've ever seen the people I know there. Once a year.
Oh, right.
The people I know that was there from Hopeville Church was one time a year.
We can ask them that, if that book, you know. Any other new business?
Do you think all that's booked?
Yes, sir, I do.
What, what do you know?
Well, if I say anything.
Well, if I say anything, somebody's gonna get mad.
Okay, you don't get?
Nobody's gonna get mad.
We're listening.
Nobody's gonna get mad. No?
Oh, he's talking about moving to the church, so I don't know.
What church?
Alright, well, we're gonna move on to public comment.
I go first?
Go ahead, Dave.
Can I come up front here so everybody can see me, now, can you hear it?
What was your voice, Danny?
Ah, no, I can't hear you. Is the recorder on so I can be heard, Ben?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, my name's Dave Skinner, and recently, uh, during the election, I had a sign in front of my house, and there was a grammar, there was a apostrophe S put in front of the S, okay? And, uh, this was up there for two months, and maybe two weeks before the election. Uh, Jeff Corpeney put on the internet, my name, that I was an illiterate. I would like for you to define what the word illiterate means.
That's not accurate. You're saying that I've done something that I, it's not accurate.
What's not accurate about it? It was on there, put it on there, but you I hope this camcorder's on, cause I want this camcorder too. So you may wanna answer, uh, define illiterate?
I already told you, I didn't, I didn't call anyone illiterate, so.
Well, I want you to know, I went to school to my senior year and quit, later on, I got my GED, I attended M A T C, where I was on the dean's list, and I want you to know, an illiterate is someone that can't read or write. I can read and I can write. So, you know, that was very, very rude for you, I mean, I'm.
You're saying that I did that and I didn't, Dave?
Well, I want you to keep, continue there, and then you can, uh, address me.
I already said all I need to say, Dave.
Uh, cause you ain't got nothing else to say about it, because you know you're wrong, and I want this one recorded, because this is really rude. I tell you, I've worked my whole life, I can't work no more, cause I'm disabled, I've got medical issues, and, and if someone called, if, if I see someone illiterate, that can't read or write, can't do nothing, I'm gonna come to that person and try to help them. I'm not gonna ridicule them on the internet and put them down. I think that is very, very wrong of you, Jeff. Very wrong. So I hope, I hope you put what I'm saying on the internet without editing it, what I said. Cause what I'm saying you did is absolutely wrong. What was your point of doing this? I had a sign, Ben Huff, Ben Van Burn, I felt those were the best candidates, and I voted for them. Took you two months, or someone you know two months, that knows that there's a S, a corner in front of that S. And you took pictures of it and put it on there. I think that is very wrong, very wrong for a trustee that's supposed to be behind the residents and people to call them an illiterate and put it on the internet. That's all I've got to say, Ben, Ben?
Yep.
The shoe is on the other foot. You accused me of water's option of taking your stuff, see? Okay, but he did, but he did. Got the same thing.
Do we have any other public comments, Mike?
I'll make a motion to pay bills.
I just, I wanna say congratulations, Dan and Ben.
Congratulations, Jeff, you got work. That's a contract.
He said, you, you brought my stuff.
I can, can just. Does anybody know about the telephone for the voting inspector?
I thought that was unfinished business.
I thought you were gonna get a price on it.
No, the last meeting, two meetings ago, the lady that was sitting here told you about the price, the minutes, the.
Somebody was gonna bring a price.
Hairline on it, and then the next meeting, they asked you about it, and you said, I have to check into it.
Yeah, somebody said they would get a price, turn off all the prices.
It wasn't me said that, you said you rushed that.
Well, I apologize for what I said.
Yeah, you said you rushed that in.
Wouldn't forgive you.
Uh, no. Ben, you did, did not say you would check into it, you were waiting for the response.
Oh, I did see that, yeah.
From the resident that brought it up.
No other public comment, no other, Dan made a motion to pay bills, I second. Hey, Dave, don't feel like the Lone Ranger, he told me I'm lying.
The action time.
First check is four, three, two, seven, and all, and nine dollars seventy cents. Check number four, three, two, eight, and as we see, six hundred twenty-two dollars ninety cents.
Hey, you may want one of these cookies before I take them home?
Hey, clean my mouth.
I was in the department.